...of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is compliant with Chapter 3, 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospective as well as posting notices in the Rutherford Hall, Runham Beach Post Office, Mary Bold School, Aileen Bigum School, Grace Downing School, and the Runham Beach Public School District website. Would you please stand at this time for the pleasure of this.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and to every parliament for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Tricia Dyer?
Here.
Angel Bebe?
Here.
Charles Buckeye?
Here.
Naomi Davison?
Maria Panzarella?
Yeah.
Patricia Smith?
Here.
Samantha Spalding?
Liz Terrell?
Here.
Amy Farrel?
Here.
Motion, you have it for him? Thank you. Okay, let's take a look at the financial report. Any questions there? We'll comment. Just one topic, like we're getting back to where we should be in the March agenda. Hopefully, you want to have January and February's reports so that it will be real time on all the projects.
Yes.
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 Okay, yes. We need to do the approval of motion for approval of minutes from the work session, January 27th, regular meeting, number 27, and executive session.
And Amy, and Pat, and Derek.
Tricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we did our financial report. At this time, we have a special presentation of our Boy Scouts. Okay. My first night taking over as a man. It'll run fresh next time, you know. Okay, without motion or the financial report. Was it Liz? Liz and then Pat. Tricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we did our financial report. At this time, we have a special presentation of our Boy Scouts. Okay. My first night taking over as a man. It'll run fresh next time, you know. Okay, without motion or the financial report.
I'll make a motion.
Was it Liz? Liz and then Pat. Tricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Thank you very much. Okay, presentation by the Boy Scouts.
How you doing? I don't know if it's time for you to say, but are you here for your merit?
They're working on their citizenship and community merit badge.
Okay.
You guys want to tell us about tales at all?
Just questions.
Well, actually, one of the requirements is they need to attend the meeting and then they have to find a topic that you're discussing that there are two different opinions and they're going to tell me why they think one is right or one is wrong.
Ooh, interesting.
I'm sure we'll have some of that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, young men. Appreciate it.
Can't they introduce themselves? Is that okay?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Gentlemen, could you sit up and tell us who you are and what grade you are in? What school are you attending?
Steven.
Steven. Make.
What grade? What grade are you in? Seventh grade? You're at Bold School?
Yes.
Where are you going to go?
I'm going to Bold School.
Welcome.
I'm Kristen Jones, and I'm in seventh grade, and I go to Bold School.
I'm great in algebra, and I'm in third grade.
I guess I go to ninth grade, and I'm seventh grade.
Oh, yeah, I go to seventh grade.
I'm seventh grade, and I go to Bold School.
I'm my gooey under chef master. Ben Denise, committee chair.
I'm Tommy Thompson, Steven's father.
We want to thank you guys for coming out, and it's a great organization to be involved in. It helps you grow and mature and become really excellent citizens for your community. So, good job, guys. Is there any addition or response from any of the boys?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, we'd like to, we'd like to open it up, recognize our citizens. Please be reminded that the public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and are in place to judicial contact with the staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator. About prior petitioning, the Board of Education complaint should only be brought to the Board after appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve a problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics to be addressed on the published agenda tonight and limited to three minutes and eleven. You're open to the public. Please state your name and your address if you have any comments. None at this time? Let's move on to the secretaries' report.
Sure, I'll do mine. All right. Just a couple things. Let's trigger a moment. As of last week, February 21st, was 848 students including 10 out of district placements. We talked about towards the end of the workshop. We did receive the ROD grants for Downing and Volt School. Mr. Bruno or China, if they are, did post that this year for Bangham, Downing, and Volt's. Thing was approved before was upgrades to the replacements of some windows, the rooms of all three buildings, and some other things that they need to be done. This we just learned to take it at home, so we'll have those things. We reached out to the architect to set the meeting. If that stuff is completed this morning. We did not receive the money for the upgrades to replacement kitchen here at Volt's School. I also think that's going to hurt us as much financially as we felt. We will explore options for the lunch program and continue to do that. Teacher evaluations and walkthroughs continue to go well. As far as staff professional development, those student health objectives were changed by any staff members that I know of. We talked about last week and had the changes for work 14, so we're good 15, so we're good with that. And staff continues, as Dr. Terrence said earlier, to attend workshops and turn pieces of information to kind of train the trainer. As far as myself, last week, spent a day up in Trenton talking about the complexity of special education and laws. Opportunity with Mrs. Hines sometime next day or so, we'll review some stuff, make sure we're on the same page. She knows a lot of that information better than I do. It was a good, high open experience for me to attend that. Also, we're talking about attended roundtable two weeks ago. 180 requirements still in effect. Some of the questions that come up, the state emergency, he's helping make up the dates. He answered, yes. We haven't made up one date so far that we've lost. We still have some dates to make up and talk about when that's going to happen. We're going to wait until the, probably the March meeting for more decisions regarding making it from, in plenty of days, we have to come up in April or May or whatever to look at the table at the end of the year. We should have a better idea next month. Other than that, everything, our district handbook for board members, we're trying to get that underway. I'd like to meet with this two or three members maybe after meetings, if you can set another date. I thank the office specialists and the business board office for setting up a lot of that information. We have a lot of, we talked about in our last meeting, so we'll set another by next week if you guys are available. We're hoping for no more snuff.
And just go back to the ad hoc committee that's working on the board handbook. Everyone, all board members, you have a copy of our minutes from our first meeting. Even though we have three board members on that committee and Mark, we would appreciate your input. Take a look at what we've put together to this point, and if you could email Mark or one of the three of us that's on the committee with any closer ideas. We don't want to leave anything out that any board member feels is important information.
And we do put that handbook together. It's going to be digital?
Yes.
So it's going to live?
It'll be used in paper.
It's going to live in the cloud or somewhere, somewhere there. It's a lengthy document and, you know, we're just trying to move forward 2014, so. And it's going to be something updated constantly, so if it lives, we're going to update that according.
Okay, thank you. Principals' reports. Any question about board members or any comments by the principals?
I do have some questions. I apologize. I don't think I was very clear with Mrs. Jesse or Mr. Peely about times for drills. As far as the time of day, that doesn't matter to me when you have your drill. I just want to know how much time it takes the children to exit the buildings. That's all. You know, the date of the drills, fine, and the amount of time that it takes, that was my fault, and I apologize. I wasn't clear on that.
There is an ending time on.
Yes, there was. I saw that. I did see that.
So you want us to then also add the accumulated minutes?
Yeah, I mean, all I really truly care about is just to see if the children are exiting the building safely or the type of drill that you're running is within the parameter of the time that you and Mrs. Jesse feel is correct. So you can keep tabs on how the students are doing.
That is a document that the county will fill out, send it in by June every year. It gives you the date, time you do it, and the length of the drill. So that's something that is your.
Right. That's the main thing, just so you know, from your perspective, and of course, when you're filling out this information, that you're following through the parameters of the time that you feel is safe for your children to enter the building.
Yeah, and it probably fluctuates from facility to facility and how many kids you have and everything like that. But, I mean, I think what we try to do is, again, like any kid growing in a classroom who wants to be progressive, you want to get better at the end than you were at the beginning.
Exactly.
So, okay, we'll try to.
That was my fault. I apologize. And Mrs. Jesse, I will be in contact with you to come in and observe. I have not forgotten. Just personal obligations are overwhelming at this point in time, so.
The invitation's always there.
Okay, just so you know, I have not forgotten. Okay, thanks.
If I could just comment, I know Mrs. Jesse's principal's report, we are changing the way we do kindergarten roundup. We met collectively, building secretaries and nurses as well, trying to streamline some of those things that we've done in the past. And then we, I'll be honest with you, in my opinion, it was a waste of resources the way it was done in the past, not only the teachers' time, but money-wise, getting subs for nurses and teachers and everything else. So we're trying to streamline that activities. That will take place, I believe, the week of March 17.
Correct.
Nurses are on board. I appreciate their input they gave to Mrs. Jesse for me. I appreciate the teachers' input as well.
And how is it coming to change and streamline from the old way?
Would you like to? I'll describe the old way, maybe Mrs. Jesse. I know Mrs. Hummel's here, she can help me out as well if she'd like to. In the past, we used Trinby with some.
Trick turn.
And we got subs for all the kindergarten teachers, plus a couple of special education teachers, as well as secretaries of both buildings, nurses of both buildings. Now, nurse, for instance, costs 55 hours an hour. Pay for a nurse, and I believe we said per day was about, what, $20, $100 for paying out for that. And it was open, so people would just show up at any time. Sometimes you'd have, and I was there last year a couple times.
There's one time where you have nobody, and then all of a sudden, you get 10 kids in at once.
So now, we're sending out the information. You want to take the.
I was just going to say, probably the biggest change is that it's by appointment. So it's great, it's better for the parents, it's really better for the staff. So I would say that would be like the number one change. Also, the nurses were screening the children for vision and hearing, but that's already a requirement on the physical forms. We were kind of doing the same thing twice. So it frees up their time to have one-on-one conversations. We also modified the entry assessment. The feedback that I got from the kindergarten teachers, it was probably too long and unnecessary. So we tried to, we just worked together, what do you think is best, knowing with some baseline data, that would be best. We don't need to see them for maybe 30 minutes. Probably a 10-minute snapshot gives us just what we need. So little things, again, just to make it better for the community and for the staff. And we updated all the forms, a lot of the secretaries helped with that, and the finished product looks very nice, and I think it'll be a lot better. And if it's not, then we'll go back to the drawing board and just make it as, you know.
And I know a lot of the kids that aren't in the free school program, they're kind of just going to blend right in.
Right.
Send that information out. It'll be a little bit different, I know, for the application process for them.
Correct.
For the roundup, but.
But they will also be assessed, and will also meet with each parent again. I think it's user-friendly, and it will go much better this year.
Excellent. Can you just give us an update once the roundup is over as far as how you felt, how the staff that was involved felt?
Will happen for the next meeting.
Are the, are the kindergarten teachers still involved in this assessment process?
Well, the intervention specialist, Mrs. Fans and Mrs. Ralston, will do all of the assessing, so it'd actually be probably more uniform in the past because there's only two people doing it versus four. But the one kindergarten teacher actually took the lead on revising the assessment a little bit, and then she sent it to me, and then I brought it to the attention of a couple other staff members to get their feedback.
And did you get feedback from the other three kindergarten?
Yeah, it was, it was put out there. Like, if you wanted to, you know, help us with the entry assessment, just send any ideas or suggestions, you know, my way. So it wasn't mandatory that they were involved, but we always put it out there. Anybody who has a suggestion, great, you know, if not, we'll, you know, work through it to make it.
Did you get responses back from all four kindergarten teachers as far as what they thought was important in this assessment?
Well, we pulled, all we did was we pulled the main components from previous assessments. Feedback that I got informally from teachers, that it was lengthy for the kids. So we just tried to streamline it a little bit, but I can give you specifics.
Yeah, but just give me an example on what do you stream, one little component that you streamline?
Probably time. Like, we may have asked them to identify something to do with colors. Maybe there was three or four questions on colors, something that we could kind of sum up in one question. I mean, little minor changes, and I think we'll get the same results, and we're just looking at some baseline data. It's, you know, they're, I mean, between now and kindergarten, kids grow a lot, so it just gives us an idea of, you know, we want to group the students heterogeneously, so it gives us a little bit of information on if kids are above average, average or below average, and we can kind of mix the kids together, and then the boy-girl factor. Again, it's just kind of making, using data to drive our decisions.
And also taking some time away from the nurses as well, as kind of taking that assessment.
Correct.
But also giving parents now for two days, make sure it's open over a four or five-day window. We have that to tell at a certain time, so it's not specific.
And they're assessed again in September as well. That's why, you know, just kind of, just enough to have us make some important decisions from the beginning.
And again, you know, I'm not trying to think we're reinventing the wheel here. We did reach out to other places. We were fortunate enough to have a new administrative team bringing some great ideas from the teachers that they work in, of things that they know have worked for them, so we try to put our own touch on it and see how it goes. Mrs. Fran, any other questions?
How does the, obviously, we know because we're here, preschool, know because it'll come home, I'm assuming it'll come home with kids within our district, but how does the public find out when kindergarten roundup is, if it's their first time?
You blast that out on Next. What's that?
But then we might.
Yeah, what's that? We channeling, well, even if they're new to the district.
New to the district. These are their first child coming to kindergarten.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, when I had my child, it was my responsibility to make sure I understood that those things work. So we tried to get the information out, and I read it as in the library on a flyer, you know, in a book. So, well, different ways. Channeling team posted to the library, posted to local. And the forums will be there, so in case they didn't print stuff out, we can have that filled out when they come.
Thank you. What's anybody? Do you want to report on it this time? No? Everything clear?
No, it's not worth it.
How about PTA?
Just to let you know, we've had a request for some of the student school trip, the field trips. They've been coming in, and we've talked with building principals about different trips that are coming up, and we're excited about that. We had a highly successful event last Friday night. We had what we called the Little Girl and Her Guy Dance, and that was for K through third female students to bring an adult escort with her to her dance. We talked about it as a masquerade ball or come to the princess party. They all got dressed up, and then he had flowers for tuchets. We actually had 105 students attend. Some of them were two sisters bringing one escort, so, you know, they, the actual count of adults was close to 200 participants total. We had a lot of volunteers, we had PTA volunteers, we had many staff members come to peek in on their little princesses. And we also had a lot of donations for the snacks from the community, which was fantastic. It made a highly successful event within our budget. And we have our big fundraiser coming up. The basket auction is April 25th, and that will be held here, and we're just continuing to plan for that.
Thank you very much.
Shall I have questions back? I got a question from the nurse's report and special ed questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see that we're reading.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. Kristi, you said you had attended a school safety meeting and had safety concerns addressed at district level. Can you brief us on what type of concern you have, safety or.
That was, that was just our school safety committee had a meeting here at the district level prior, in prior months. And then we had an adjustment elementary staff meeting, which a few of the staff, identified staff members from both buildings came to the safety meeting. So other members were doing other professional development at the staff meeting, having other events. We kind of got a little grouped together just to talk about what we had discussed at the district level, to bring it back to, you know, some of the participants at the elementary level, and then to just ask them what are some things that they may have seen, just minor things. Maybe one of the teachers' room doors was something that didn't have a lock, an interior lock. So we addressed that with Mrs. Jesse, and that is.
I know, and we talked about our district laws, it was after hours, it's a huge thing now, so we have to really concentrate on eliminating this thing from being brought in at any time, whether it be for a lunchtime or snacks or a party like that. And that's just the big thing to talk about, because other things involve as well.
Right, so we took that district item and brought it back to the classrooms. We had some of the aides and the preschool substitute, the long-term sub was there. So we just talked about some of the things that they might use in their classroom. It was more of an informal, it wasn't the formal safety team meeting, but it was just a way, it was a nice time to kind of get a broad group of people together that worked in all different of the grade levels to talk about some of the things that they see, the drills and things, how they go. One of the things we talked about was the people that come in from outside, our physical therapist, our occupational therapist, it was kind of identified, like, how do we catch them up? So we talked about it good way, and we were able to institute it literally within the week.
Thanks. We're interested in a question about, new cases come up with special ed. You had an eighth grader here as a new referral. Was this a student that was a new student or someone that's been in the district for a while?
For the new referral, it's a student that's been in the district for a while. Did transfer in about, I want to say, three years ago. It's a parent referral.
Okay, so this one, I'm just, I'm concerned seeing here, you know, because I'm such an early advocate.
Yes.
An early intervention advocate, to see an eighth grade student here with a new referral, that concerns me, so I was just.
It's a parent referral. He's, the student's never been on our radar or referred by or talked about at IRNS. It's not school-wide, we don't have concerns as much, but it's with a parent referral we filed through.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Nice to.
Your one. Other committee reports, can't tell the education services?
I'm not here. They're moving.
Okay. All right. Under New Jersey School Board Association, our next meeting for delegates is not until May 17th, and at that time, I will have a update at our June meeting. Blackwood's pipe, and Sam does that, she is unable to be here this evening, and also with negotiations that we leave today.
Negotiations tomorrow, right?
Negotiations due Thursday. Tomorrow? Tomorrow?
Don't even say the word. It's crazy.
So that's tomorrow. Under Business, Property and Transportation.
Before you go off into business, we're going to need to have a special budget meeting because the budget has to be submitted to the county office by March 20th, and I think our regular board meeting is the 24th. I would suggest that either Monday, the 18th, or Tuesday, the 19th would be good possible dates for the administration to have the budget ready for you.
Monday, the 18th.
Can you give us the dates again, then? What?
Monday, the 18th of March, or Tuesday, the 19th of March.
Okay, you can check your calendars. The 18th or 19th of March, special budget meeting.
She's going to be that one. Monday.
I think Monday normally is better.
Monday, the 18th?
Monday, the 17th.
Tuesday, the 18th.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's Tuesday. March 17th is Monday.
Monday, 17th, okay.
Is that what you want?
Monday, the 17th.
17th or 18th.
Yeah, really?
Sure. You can go to the same party for here. We'll make it quick.
Yeah, it's a short meeting. It's just.
Set the clock, work for people.
On the 17th.
On the 17th.
I'll be a little late, but I'll be good.
Okay. Okay. 17th, 6 o'clock. Go back to property and transportation then. Any questions? If there are no questions, can I have a motion? There is a.
One second.
A second. Pat, you're there. Patricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
And Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Curriculum? Any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve one. One that I'm sure.
Pat, you're there. Tricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
And Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Curriculum? Any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve one. One that I'm sure.
Liz, second.
I'll second that.
Tricia Dyer?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrel?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Liz Terrell?
Yes.
Motion, Karen. Other policies upon release? I don't think at this time we have any policies that were under consideration. Okay, thanks for the warning.
Be right.
All right, this time, we want to again give the public an opportunity to. Okay. 17, six o'clock. Go back to property transportation then. Any questions? If there are no questions, can I have a motion? Second. Patty Dair? Patricia Dair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
Marie Panzarella?
Yes.
Tricia Smith?
Yes.
And Lynn Terrell?
Yes, and I wish to offer good luck to the girls' basketball team on their playoff field.
Well, they made the championship.
Championship, I'm sorry, championship.
Smart idea, class.
Yes, priority.
Call the bus.
Why don't I bring class and start with class?
Personnel, board members, any questions? Challenge on those. I guess.
Yeah, I'll make an issue to approve one.
Pat to Pat. Tricia Dair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
Marie Panzarella?
Yes.
Tricia Smith?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Tricia Dair. Thank you. Finance. Questions at this time? Eleven. None at this time? Can I have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, Maria, and please. Patricia Dair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
Marie Panzarella?
Yes.
Tricia Smith?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Tricia Dair. Curriculum? Any comments or questions?
I'll make the motion for two more for families.
Lynn, second.
I'll second that.
Tricia Dair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe? Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
Marie Panzarella?
Yes.
Tricia Smith?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Tricia Dair. Other policies upon release? I don't think at this time we have any policies that were under consideration. Okay. Thanks for the warning. All right, at this time, we want to again give the public an opportunity to speak. Please be reminded that the public is reminded you should attempt to resolve these problems and or complaints. Initial contact with the staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the board of education. Complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements that you are going to make should be limited to three minutes. At this time, any public comments? If not, I do want to thank the public for coming out this evening. We have no items that we need to discuss under executive session. Can I have a motion on the floor for the chairman of the speakers?
I make the motion.
Penny Maria and Patty Dair.
All right. Thank you so much. I do. I mean, we can't wait to see you all the time, so.
I'll be right.
Welcome. I'm interested into all the things.
Maria and Patty Dair. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same vote, Carrie. Have a good night, everyone.